A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the sacred revival which is stand, illumination under God, indivisible, with everything that has been drawn.
The county commission regular meeting. I'll call this meeting to work. Members of the president are Darryl Baker, Don Clark, the United States President, Charles Edwards Commissional, Charles McCann Commissional. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was scheduled on November 20, 2014, at 10:00. I'll say. Motion in center. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If they're unanimous, motion carries. Uh, Jim, motion to approve the minutes of the special session Lincoln County Commission meeting that certified the election results on November 17th, October 14th, and 15th. Motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have public comment. Howard Sharp with dilapidated building.
Just wanted to bring this to your attention. Mr. Ryan of the Allen Creek Lions Club wanted me to bring this to you. He sent a copy of this March 9th, 2013, about dilapidated building. And at this point, I don't believe anything's been done about it. Think you can get a bulldozer or something and go do something about it.
Well, regarding the dilapidated buildings, we've tried to constitute a board and trying to run that under the planning committee. I've addressed Philip Skeens recently, and I think he agreed to sit on the board. But there are certain people that by code have to be on that board. And what we're trying to do is get everything together. Okay? But we'll make sure that this is the first thing, you know, that they look at.
He said he had not heard anything from anybody.
Well, the reason for that is because the Dilapidated Buildings Committee has not met. They haven't been meeting. And it's because they didn't have a board. I mean, you know, the, I guess, the person, the people that were over the board, they weren't doing anything, having no meetings. And a lot of times, that's not brought to your attention until, you know, we started this with the planning committee. And once we went into this planning committee, we started looking at, you know, dilapidated buildings would be under that. And we started digging into that and noticed that, you know, they had no meetings. They hadn't been doing anything. So what we have to do is get a board together. And I think that we're in the process of doing that. Okay? So you can tell Jim, Citizen of the Year, tell Jim that we'll take care of this. Thanks. All right. Next, David Webb, Solace School.
Maureen Anthony, if I'd stand in for her. She has wanted to give you all an update on what we've done with the cleanup this year. And this is a list of the sites, the tonnage that we picked up. And like I, I think I told you at one of the meetings, this is, you know, the first time we've done this many. And... If you have any questions. That's the amount of money that you all have gave us, and then that's what we contributed, and that's what we spent. And the total of 149. Number of containers that we had at each of those locations. You can see, that's pretty much a big graphic of the county fairly well there. So, actually, I forget, fairly well there. One other thing I wanted to bring to y'all's attention is, I met with, the guy's name's Calvin, someone that takes care of the Lions Club field here at Hammond. Do y'all know him?
Actually...
Yeah. Anyway, they've got some major drainage issues going on with the Lions Club field here in Hammond. And they've asked the conservation agency to look at that. And I got ahold of our people in Huntington. And we were a player in that when that drainage was initially put in about 18 years ago or something, the conservation agency was. So they're doing some research now to see if they can find any maps, anything on that. But what's going on with the compaction over the years, roots, et cetera, getting into that? We're starting to have some drainage issue. And Calvin, from what I understand, is probably the last one around to point out the location of any of that stuff. So I was talking to Dave Roberts about it. What needs to happen is that place needs to be surveyed. It's never been surveyed. And, you know, to get in there and get a, some graphics done on where this stuff's located, we need to start out with a good survey map of that Lions Club field. And I told Dave Roberts over at the Lions Club that, you know, I felt that's the first course of action, is to get that place surveyed. And then we can get some maps made off that end where then we can locate these utilities and the drainage and all that stuff to get started. And of course, you know, and then that's a funding thing. But I just wanted to give you all a heads up that, you know, basically that there's problems down there, and, you know, they may be coming to someone asking for some assistance there. Because I think we all know that Lions Club field is, you know, it's beneficial to the county. But anyway, I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thanks, David. I guess we had David at the end. Mary?
Yeah, I'll give you all some maps on about what we're trying to do with the expanded structure of the city limits. About, kind of, we've got some committees, like the beautification committee, a few other committees that people are in for the town of Hammond, but they don't live in that. And I'm trying to get this out to where, I'm not trying to annex nobody or incorporate nobody, just the roads, so that if somebody wanted to be a part of the town, we could incorporate them in off the side of the road. And people pick up some business for us and help a little bit on the finance and stuff. So we do have a lot of, I mean, they're not, they're spread out. The people are spread out from there to there that would like to be in the city limits. But that's not saying that their neighbor would want to, and I'm not saying their neighbor has to. I just leave it to their discretion. I was trying to get the road. If y'all can work on that, to get the road where they would have the opportunity, if they wanted to be in the town, to be incorporated.
Right. We got to move. Congratulate them over. You want anything to say?
Do we, you're basically, you're kind of looking at how to do this, right?
Yeah. I think there are certain legality we have to know, I mean, it starts bumping in here and there. And what we'll do is, we'll look at that and see what, by code, what we have to do. We don't care how far along you are.
Sure.
And, you know?
Got my number.
Yep. And we'll go ahead like that. Okay?
That'll work?
All right. Praise to God. Thanks. All right. That's it for public comment. Next, we, um, come on. Next, we have discussion concern, possible action, Region Two Small Cities Block Grant Drawdown Request. Would you...
Mike Webb with the Region Two Planning and Development Council. I have the Small Cities Block Grant Drawdown Request number nine for the Big Hearts Water Project Phase One. And it's in a total of $38,839.75. And it's for one invoice from the Oberonson on the project third invoice number seven. The project is still going well. It's at or had a schedule. About 50% of the money has been drawn down to the point, so we're in good shape that way. And I'll be probably going out within the next week or so to wait for interviews again. And everything's going good on that front as well. So there will be no problems to speak up with him.
Thank you. That's awesome. Need a motion? Yeah, we need a motion to, to sign this paperwork here.
I'll say.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If they're unanimous, motion carries. Thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next, we have fire naming this levy. Chief? This one's going good.
Go ahead, Bill.
Bill?
It's not bad.
We're a friendly audience. I've had three hours' sleep last three days of them. We want to run our levy again because of the failure of it from the last time. Just want your blessing on that, to run that again.
Well, I think it's, it's fine with me. And I think what I've done is, I kind of had a pretty good idea that this was going to happen, given the meetings that we've had. So what I've done is sent the levy back up to the prosecutor, I'd have him look, because we're just changing dates. And then we're just going to go through the gambit of sending it to the Chief Inspection Division, all right, for their approval, which is not required by, I mean, by law, but is, you know, recommended. And then I was going to ask these guys if we'd open up a period of public comment. And then on December the 18th, if everything goes well, we could execute the order. But I'd like to officially do that. I have everything spelled out here on the agenda.
We, as the fire department, would like to thank you for your support in the past present and for the future.
Well, we just need to thank you guys for the volunteer work. I mean, most places that you still have an organization like we have in Lincoln. It's really a lot of dedicated people, and year after year, you see a few new faces. But it's, I'm sure, a struggle to keep people going. It's definitely the people who are there, and we certainly didn't do anything we can do.
But I'd like to open up a period of public comment. That's the only time. All right. All right. So if you look at the agenda, I'll put this agenda together. As according to Western State Code, it's recommended that we send the levy estimates, levy rates to the Chief Inspection Division, the State Order Office for Approval. Of course, that's recommended, okay? It's not, you know, it doesn't have to be done, but I feel like we probably should do that. Number two, I need a motion to open up a period of public comment beginning at 9:00 AM, December the 5th, to 4:30, December the 16th.
Exactly.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If they're unanimous, motion carries. The second is, I'd like to publish this in the Lincoln Journal. Not even a motion to do that.
Exactly.
Motion is, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If they're unanimous, motion carries. And then on December the 18th, we can evaluate public comment, and then we can move to execute the order. Okay? All right. Go ahead.
Just, if I might be cynical for a moment, this applies for the ambulance as well. I notice they're not here this evening.
I'm the president of the board, Mr. McCann.
Okay. So same, same thing.
Yeah, this was the fire naming levy, now that's what, you know, says on the, on the agenda. That's what we're taking out.
And this would be for a February 28th?
Uh, yes.
Election?
All right. Appreciate you guys coming by. I know it's, we appreciate not only you coming by tonight, but all those nights when we might need you in the future. So we'll do our best, which I think we, we're kind of maybe, we didn't do the last election, but this time we'll, we'll get the job done. I mean, y'all do a heck of a job for us, and it's up to us to help you guys. We appreciate the job y'all do.
And I appreciate you all giving the information to me, to Mary, and taking care of all that stuff for us. Really do.
You know, what we do is, when we don't get out and vote, like we didn't the last time enough, you know, we let the people who don't want something call the shots. That's what we're doing. So we've got to get with it and make sure that the people who want this are vocal and work out and get it done.
All right. Next, we have Brenda Eskew with Lincoln PSD update. News board member?
She hasn't even quit yet.
Six times. Six times.
Just wanted to get a brief update on some of the changes that we've made thus far. We've hired back the previous accountants, Griffin Associates.
Right.
We're going back to the previous billing system with Appalachian Software with Walt Frazier. We would like to seek approval and have paperwork in place for a loan of $50,000 if the need arises, so we can get it on a timely basis. We have the accountants working on this, and hopefully we won't need it. But we'd like for it to be there if we do need it.
With this, this one, because, I mean, our next meeting is December the 18th, and I think that's the date you need to, correct?
Right.
All right. So you all will not be, do you all have any plans to have any special meetings before then?
No, but I won't.
Okay. Then we can discuss this at our next meeting. We'll have, I mean, because our next meeting, hopefully, we'll have that at, what, 10:00 AM or 11:00?
The 18th.
Are you asking us to approve it before you all go to ask for a loan?
We just want to make sure we have payroll.
Yeah, I understand.
It's, it's tough.
But, but we'll have to take that up on the 18th. That's what I was checking, to see, you know, if the people just want to be in need, then we have to set up a meeting to then...
So you, you have to meet and decide then?
Yeah.
How long will it take to do paperwork to meet?
I don't know if it can take that long to do paperwork. But I mean, we would have to...
If we need it before then, you'd be in a special meeting?
We'd have to meet, we'd have to have a special meeting, is what I'm saying. So I was wanting, what I wanted to know is, if you're not going to have a special meeting before the 18th, you're not going to act on anything until 4:00 on the 18th.
Well, if we have a special meeting, it'll be with some of the, some of the computer base.
Okay. But what I'm saying is, I'm talking about for money. Like, if you needed money immediately, you would have to have a special meeting for that.
Right.
So we can, we can put this on the December the 18th agenda to discuss this, and then possibly take, you know, possibly go through the action of getting a loan. You understand what I'm saying?
And what we would, would like, or what I'd like also, is to make sure that, you know, when you come forward with a loan, that you have the paperwork on your end that says what you need it for, and things like that.
Yes, from the accountants.
And things of that nature, so...
Okay. We are actively responding to all the lawsuits. And Ron Flora, the previous attorney, is working on the legal matters this time. And we appreciate it, and thank you for cooperation.
Thank you, Brenda. All right. Next on the agenda, we have Mercy Sims.
I'm glad to see Brenda here. She thinks she's got problems. You know, I hardly know which way to, I have theorized this. You know, with the alcohol project, there is so many questions. Is that a phase one, or is it a phase two? Because if you look at the infrastructure now, it looks like it's been tied in with the lower mud river. And I mean, it looks like we're going back to deja vu all over again with, why the Triad lawsuit? Because with the Triad lawsuit, we had the alcohol, we have numerous and numerous Public Service Commission orders here, where the alcohol phase one and phase two went through, was reported. Here is the permits, it was done. They further backed it up by doing a rate increase through the Public Service Commission in '07 in case number 06664. If you look at these, right here is your alcohol permit in there for 289. There's your Scoloxville permit for 59. So you know what? I'm here to ask this body to not approve anything else on the economic development, because we have project number 2010-1178, that's gone through all the gammas of the lower mud river. In January of '13, it became 1393 Lincoln PSD. Alcohol now is kind of sitting on the backseat, so I'm not exactly sure. So this is what I'm, this is the lower mud project, and we'll just kind of go through this, and I'll kind of show you the reason for my concerns. I think you've got mine, Doc. Okay. Sorry. See if we can make some sense out of this and decide where we go. Because I talked to Jim Spurlock at the infrastructure for 45 minutes last week. And he, he said, I don't, I can assure you that your concerns are unfounded, because there's no way the two could ever be combined. So we went a little further, and about 20 minutes into the conversation, he started to kind of think there was a wrinkle in the, in the paper somewhere. So the first thing that we have here is, that is just a few pages from the economic development, the lower mud project. The second one you have is the lower mud infrastructure that was, and I'll just give you a couple pages, and I ask you to look at page three of that. Lincoln Public Service District Water, Alcohol Mud River, Rule 42. And I ask you to look at, you've got the 1393. If you look at the date on that, it was switched in January the 15th. It became 1393. Prior to that, it was 2010-1178. Now, we have got the funding schedule, too, that we're up to $13 million for funding for the alcohol project. But it's phase one, A and B route. It's phase A and B. So is it...
So you...
Air bond is now up to, I'll give you this, KK, because it's, air bond is now, we have a loan for $2,500,000 for air project. Air bond, the draft bond, of course, we don't have the original code for the loan, it's not being closed yet. But the draft bond is for $4,975,000.
So...
So is there two projects together?
That's what I was, I mean, so what you're, what you're bringing is...
Look at this.
The funding for the alcohol Woodville and the funding for the lower mud river would all be coming out of the same hole.
Right here. And if you look at the comments in that, it appears when Frazier revised the counts, that's when, that's when we went, that's why we had such a hard time getting air count, because never, the original project for alcohol was like 276, 286, then of course we added the mud river. So it never should have been over 300. And all of a sudden, in '09, right after the DEP made, there was three orders came from the Lincoln County Commission, '09, '007-2, '09, '007-3, and '09, '007-4. '72 was stipulated as alcohol for 350. '72 was stipulated for alcohol. '73 was stipulated for Bulger Mud River for 250. And '74 was Route 3. So 600, where did 600 come from? I mean, that was, that was just, that was, I don't know, from the county commission and...
When was that, when you say the county?
'09. '09. January of '09 was the two, was the orders from the, I don't know if I have a copy of that order, because I couldn't possibly bring everything.
Mercy World, who has gotten those numbers from?
Well, that's why, that's what slapped me right across the face, because my opinion is because we had so many previous sins from the other ones that was turned in, wasn't completed, somewhere those counts had to be covered eventually. And I think this is where, and the permit was pulled for our project for 516 customers. We don't have 516, even if we got the total signature, there's only 350.
What I'm saying is, you know, the people that bring us that stuff that we act on would that have kind of come from the PSD itself, wouldn't it? I mean, for the engineers...
I keep, you know what, Doc? I can't answer your questions. I'm only looking at the, the case, '07, the case...
You know, I know the things that come before us. I mean, in the past, you know, there's been groups that have given us that information that we back upon. I mean, because I know we couldn't have generated those numbers without having some of that information. What I'm, what I'm wondering about, and I know this has always been a concern of you and it's a concern of mine, if we can't match these numbers out, but I wonder if the PSD and the accountants and things that are there now could look at this and try to figure it out, see if those things were generated from there.
Well, you know what? Of course, this all came from Mr. Griffin, from Mr. Flora, and it was all sanctioned by them. So it, it was, just like in '06, right here is '06, which ties in with the 256 customer that was turned in. I was just looking at the '06 bond, and this date, I had highlighted that in the bond. It says alcohol phase one, and it was a foncy, found no significant impact, they, they ordered. And this was for February the 23rd, 2006. When we went back and pulled the foncy, that was for the alcohol, for 256 customers. And that was turned in, in the 2006 bond.
So that's a, I mean, that's an active bond.
That's an active bond that's been done, that's in the current existing debt. So there is...
And it was turned in for an alcohol phase one.
And Triad, the lawsuit that's going on right now, Triad pulled the permit for the alcohol, the one that was turned in, which shows the alcohol, the permit is for 289 customers. They pulled the permit for 319. So that would have, that would have been the 289 and the, probably the 59 for the Scolox field. So I'm asking, you know, to, let's, let's find out what's going on here, because we, you know, we were shut out in 2000. We were shut out in 2007. And now we're, now we're on the questionable end again. We don't want to see this happen, because until you have infrastructure, no area's going nowhere. But look at our area. We're denied roads, and we're denied water. And why?
The stuff that you have here, and we're talking about the alcohol Woodville and the lower mud river, do you, from what you have, do you feel like that that's, that they're using the same, basically, they're generating, you know, using the same funding, or trying to, you know, tie that? I mean, you understand what I'm saying? If you're tying that project together, then you would be using the funding for the alcohol Woodville on the lower mud river. Is that what you're saying?
Well, you know, there's many stipulations. In '09, it went changed from terminology of upper mud, and most of the paperwork, mud river valley. And so I didn't know...
In 2009?
Mm-hmm. And then in, here we're referring to the lower mud river in the current engineering as phase three. And this is a February 25th, 2010. Which takes us to the, why we can't get, and I don't know, KK, I'll give you this. I don't have a clue what this means, but this was a newsletter that had air projects, the bids, and the numbers and everything. And right after, on the very next page, from, not maybe the next page, but these are, these are there.
Do you, from what you have, do you feel like that's, that they're using the same, basically they're generating, you know, using the same funding? Or trying to, you know, tie that? I mean, you understand what I'm saying? If you tie that project together, then you would be using the funding for the alcohol Woodville on the lower mud river. Is that what you're saying?
Well, you know, there's many stipulations. In oh-nine, it got changed from terminology of upper mud in, in most of the paperwork, mud river valley. And, uh, so I don't know.
In two thousand and nine?
Mm-hmm. And then in, uh, here we're referring to the lower mud river in the current engineering as phase three. And this is a February twenty-fifth, two thousand and ten. It takes us to the, why we can't get, and I don't know, KK, I'll give you this. I don't have a clue what this means, but this was a newsletter that had our projects, the bids and the numbers and everything. And right after, on the very next page, from, not maybe the next page, but, uh, these are, these are there. Some are there. This is stipulated, which, and I don't know what that means, but Shinaki is there as contract one. I have no idea why the other one is there that mentions Mingo County, that doesn't have a project number, anything on it. And secondly, not secondly, there's just so many things in here. In the current contract, current bond, it says the water is coming from the Mingo PSD. Now, that's in the bond. That's number twenty, that's number twenty-one on the thing. And I will give you the bond. I meant to bring that. I brought the, the current things, but I didn't bring the bond because it was just too much. But is, where is the water coming from?
You don't need to attract it. Give me a, give me a purchase PSD, yes? I mean, what do you, I mean, what are you?
Well, you know, there's two things. I think, you know, because I know Mercy's really a lot better at this than I am, as far as looking at things, because I've listened to this several times. I think two things. One, we have.
Are you saying I'm a broken record?
No, no, no. I'm just saying that, that if there's a lot of smoke, there's probably a fire somewhere. And, and, but the way to get, to find out where the fire is, I think we need to make, have the accountants answer your questions. And if there's legal issues, then we have the legal people answer your questions. Because I don't, you know, I think that's the way you get things done, because I, I can't, I, you know, I try to figure out these things and sometimes I look and, and see that, you know, one's for this particular thing and one's for another. And I don't know if they changed things or not. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not aware personally that this, the lower mud river project funding has anything to do with that. And that, you brought that up, that was a surprise to me, because I know when we received the funding for the architectural design and things like that, it comes through a particular, I didn't think it comes through Small Cities Block Grant. And, and, I mean, I, I mean, because it was, I think, uh, when, uh, I think it was the money that Ray Hall got for the construction, the architecture design of the lower mud river project was a separate project. So I don't know how you could have both those, have other funding sources tied to that and not have that in the scenario of receiving the money that we received off.
Well, do you see the funding? Did I give you the sheet there that's got the funding of thirteen million for the, uh?
Well, and I, and I look.
Twenty-eighty-six, which says A, Contract A and Contract B. So that's, you know what? They're, they're, they're probably within a hundred thousand dollars of each other, because six million, nine thousand. And they lowered that one to six million and six, I think. And the lower mud is, you know, just very close to the same.
I think when we get down to, you know, what are we gonna do about solving the thing though, uh, it would be hard for me to make a decision without having the opinions of the accountants and the legal team that, yeah, Miss Eskew.
Mike, if he was the other board member, he's an engineer and he's aware of some of this stuff that's going on. And we know that that's important to address this stuff. Right now, though, the main goal for the new, for a board member's PSD is the billing. Trying to get the bills out and get right. But he is full, he is aware of what's going on with the engineering.
To me, because to me, I'd like, you know, those accountants or people that would look at this and tell us what they found. And then if there's a legal issue, ask the prosecutor, whomever might be the appropriate person in that to give us an opinion of what they found. But I really have trouble, when I listen to what you say, it sounds awful. And then I look at all the numbers and I have trouble being able to follow things like you do, because you're a lot closer to it and have looked at it a lot more than I have. And, but I do think for us to eventually make a decision about anything, we would have to rely upon what the accountants for the PSD tell us and the engineers tell us about this stuff, because it kind of goes over my head. And, and, and I hate to say that, but it really does. And I want to make sure that if we make a decision one way or the other, that's based on accurate information.
Well, you know, I guess, and this is not to slam anybody, or please don't misinterpret this. But if we had these projects that were turned in before and clearly it's ev, it's evident, it's in black and white, and it was done under fourth directions and Griffa, are they gonna be critical of themselves?
Well, I think that's when you address those concerns with them, if they.
Well, I, I certainly would, because when I, I asked Michael Griffin about the, this documentation in this alcohol project three years ago, he said it was a mistake. It was just a, it was just a fluke. I asked him in PSD meeting. Well, now, two years later, I find out that it's carried through in the financials all the way through in that. And then when, and when I talk, after I talked to Mr. Spurlock, there's a lot of other things on the web. You know, it's all on the Infrastructure Council. I mean, it's all there in black and white to look at. And that's where I found the funding for A, A and B under, for two contracts under the alcohol. And a lot of things were not there when I first started talking to the people in Charleston that is now available to look at on the website.
What did, um, Mr. Spurlock say? What was his, I mean, what, what did he say, I mean, like direction? What, what did he say should happen?
Well, not from him, but one of the girls told me that there was, there was concern with this. Imagine my surprise when I walked into the Public Service Commission, the final that I gave you on the alcohol at the last meeting. I walked in and asked for the final on the lower mud river. Imagine my surprise when they brought me the alcohol. I said, no ma'am, this is not what I want. I want the lower mud, eleven-seventy-eight or thirteen-ninety-three. They told me this had, that thirteen-ninety-three, Mr. Spurlock said it had not gone through review. It had not gone through the funding, and that's why he assured me that it could not happen. But I had, I put in a call for him today after I found out that alcohol is A and B.
Well, and I think that the information you have should be given to the accountants for PSD. And, and, you know, we need people coming here on record.
Well, it frustrates me to no end that people, that just, I'm not the only one that can read, and I'm not the agreed one, because I'm not getting water, but it's my area that infrastructure's coming to, and we're not gonna grow unless we get it.
Right. But I really feel that, you know, we, you worked this years and years trying to figure out what's going on. And if we could get people here that work with this project and, and having Mr. Griffin, I'm sure he's familiar with what went on. And then if you address those things with him, uh, that you can, and try to resolve those things, if those things you can, I'd like to see him come here and talk to us and have you.
Absolutely. We don't want to lose air project again, and this is not against lower mud. They deserve one or two.
Well, and that's the thing we want to do. We don't want to jeopardize anybody's water.
No, absolutely.
But, you know, we, you know, if, 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 if things were done wrong, then we need to make sure they're not done wrong again.
Well, the way it's right now in infrastructure is A and B. And I don't know, because it's A and B. If you look at A, it looks like that's lower mud. Well, the contract's awarded is one and two, so there's one A or one B or two.
Well, see, that's where I think the accountants and the engineers and things need to be able to explain that. Because I don't know, you know, I don't know how. And, and maybe the Infrastructure Council doesn't know either, so, but there's somebody who's gonna know.
If they tie together and they go with the first one, we'd be on the short end of this. And I really think this is actionable. I don't think the community should sit still. If this happens again, I think there's, should be an outcry. It should be worse than Ferguson, only we won't burn.
I just, I mean, and I'm trying to think, how would you fix bonds? I mean, if a bond's already sold, how do you like?
Well, you're absolutely right, and it's documented. It's in the bond.
I mean, that's what I'm trying to, I mean, I'm, it's just, I'm trying to wrap your mind around.
I did talk to Stephanie today. The loan is not closed yet. See, that's another thing that bothers me, is why air, air, it's clearly funded, there's no doubt it's been funded. Why won't they award that contract? And, or, you know, why? There's no reason not to.